I'd like to call the Work Session to order, October 6th. And we got Vicki on the phone, right? All right, thank you. All right, for one item, the agenda. Remind council staff be pausing intermediate to go over and answer some questions. First item is fiscal year 2026 strategic plan, automation of employee process. Just announce yourself for the, for the public that's watching on.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm Lisa Faison, the Chief Information Officer for IT. And I'm here again this evening to go over another one of IT's citywide strategic plan action items. In the innovation and high performing organization, IT had a strategic plan project to identify process improvements to eliminate duplicate activities. This is a pretty broad description and it needed some additional research to learn what type of processes existed that fell into this area. IT conducted a survey of 118 employees across all the departments. The questions we asked focused on identifying existing processes that still had paper used to complete them or areas where employees were duplicating data between different software applications. Through the survey, IT was able to identify a few core areas that could benefit from automation, integration, and digitizing paper processes. The results of the survey highlighted three key areas that we can prioritize our efforts. First is repetitive workflows such as travel processes for approval or reimbursement and our financial reconciliation. The next area is duplicate data entry between different software such as our onboarding process that requires employee records to be entered into upward of five or more different software applications, along with the financial budget reporting and public records requests. The last area is our paper processes. And much to our surprise, there are still several areas in the city that we're using paper to gather information and manually input them into the systems. These areas will need further analysis to identify current processes and see what can be quick wins versus longer durations. Areas that often cause process improvements to take longer is because we've got non-documented processes, there's inconsistent data entry, or the paper data collection isn't being sufficient, along with difficult integration options. We will target the areas that can provide the most value with the intent to implement with quick wins and use continuous improvement processes that are fully optimized. Embracing our lean methodology, we will target those solutions that have high impact and low difficulty. This will include digitizing any paper forms to allow immediate data entry, use of system integration to allow data to be entered once, and shared electronically with all required systems. Use of Power BI to automate reporting needs and overall reduction in number of steps to process, number of steps to process. We'll move on with that one. You will see, you'll hear more information about these processes in our next presentation with finance. As an example of one of our quick wins, you'll see here a Power BI presentation or dashboard that we worked with our finance and budget research manager, Ryan. He built this Power BI dashboard for all the departments to monitor their budgets. These dashboards mitigated Ryan's staff having to individually pull the information from the city's financial system and send emails. Instead, these dashboards are available and refreshed on a regular, automatic basis. In conclusion, our recommendation is that we continue to utilize the city's continuous improvement initiatives by working with our IT Executive Steering Committee and a smart city committee to identify additional solutions and prioritize their implementation efforts. Later, IT will bring back an update on the success stories and solutions completed throughout this process. And with that, I will take any questions.
Vicki, any questions?
No.
All right, let me pass it around here. Benita? Laura, go ahead.
Well, I'm all for automation of employee processes. And I think when we delved into the payroll issue, we found out, you know, that there was a lot of things that, and then it made you, it brings up the question, what else is there out there? So this is a great opportunity to modernize our workforce and certainly free up a lot of employee time. If we look at your slide about your next steps and you, obviously you've got your quick hits, you're the big, the bigger things and it gets more complicated. What is your timeline, your projected timeline for each of these areas?
Yeah, depending on the, when we get in and analyze the actual processes. If they're quick wins, those are usually like a 30-day turnaround timeframe. If they're a little bit longer, it could go anywhere up to six months. It just really kind of depends on what has been documented as far as processes. If it's well documented, those are much easier for us to turn around.
Okay. Well, in, in city government time, six months is actually pretty quick. And so obviously there's a lot of things in a lot of departments that, that need attention. And do you have the bandwidth and the resources to really go after this?
Not all at one time, and that's why it'll be important for us to prioritize which ones have the highest impact and value to our users.
Okay. The action item was pretty generic and like you said, you've had to dig in to define it more. But I guess when we get to the strategic plan, you say it's done, but are you going to come back? Are you going to make a plan?
Yes.
You're going to analyze, then you're going to make a plan and we'll hear about that?
That's correct.
Okay, very good.
We plan to bring back all of our quick wins. I think the first one that we're really focusing on is the onboarding because that is a high volume of time spent by a lot of staff throughout the city. And there's some efficiencies there that can be gained fairly quick.
Okay, so we'll hear more. Thank you.
She just answered your questions.
Brandon?
Yeah, thank you. I appreciate, oh, that's super. I'll be over here. Yeah, no, I appreciate all the hard work. Thank you for going through, I mean, yeah, making, streamlining it, taking away just more automation and less paper, more scanning, things like that is, is great. So, so good. I'm looking forward to those efficiencies. So, thank you.
All right, short one. We'll go next up. Thank you. Financial system integration plan. Please, Jared, introduce yourself to the public.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Jared Askelson. I'm the Finance Director here with the City of Goodyear. We're talking about the second strategic plan action item of the night, financial system integration, specifically identifying, evaluating, prioritizing, and presenting potential integration with the city's financial system, which is Munis. Three general types of data transfer we'll be talking about tonight. One's data integration, which is a seamless flow of data between two systems back and forth. It also has automated reconciliation of, of the data so that you don't have, have a person checking constantly back and forth on that data. The system actually gives you notes when things aren't lining up. Data import, which can be, there's different degrees of data import. There can be automated data imports or ones that are done by individuals. So a person has to export a report from one system and import it into another. Not real-time data like you would see in data integration. It's usually point-in-time type of information. And finally, you have manual entry, which is what Lisa was talking about in the last one, which is somebody keying into both systems separately. The city's core financial system is Tyler Technologies' Munis system. We implemented it during fiscal year 2018. It's widely used throughout the valley. We have a few neighboring cities that also use Tyler, Munis. It is an enterprise resource planning system. So it has many modules that can be used for many different business activities. However, we don't use it for all of our activities because of business need. There are some specialized areas that we can't use the Tyler product for those purposes. So as part of this, the first thing we did is we went through and we mapped out all of our systems. And in the middle of that, you can kind of see in the red, that's where we have all of our modules for the Munis system. And we really focused on five specific modules that had a lot of interaction with other systems, the human resources and payroll systems, which are very tied together, payment processing, our utility billing, and our budget system. So when we looked at the human resources and payroll, data transfers back and forth. A lot of this, we have this information from the payroll and timekeeping assessment that was completed last spring and was presented to the city, the city's audit committee along with city council. The three systems that have data imports include our, they're all our timekeeping systems. So ExecuTime, Tell Us Staff, and Sub It Up. So you'll notice we have notes on Tell Us Staff and Sub It Up that it's one way. So we import data on the actual time entries from Tell Us Staff and Sub It Up into the Munis system so we can calculate and then pay out the payroll. However, the data that is going into Tell Us Staff, the data going into Sub It Up, so the employee information, their, their status, that type of thing, that has to be manually entered in both systems. So there's still manual interaction on those even though we have a data import for the time entry. We also have manual entry for NeoGov and employee action forms. And NeoGov is our, that is our recruiting software. A lot of our onboarding happens there. As Lisa had mentioned, that's a very manual process. Now we're entering data in both systems. So we're looking to update that and, and make that more efficient. So all of these items are covered under the responses that we made to our payroll and timekeeping assessment. These are all on a timeframe to have their integrations optimized by spring of next year. And council, first the audit committee and council will, will be continuing to get reports out on how we are doing on those responses for the payroll and timekeeping assessment. Next up, we have payment processing. We, we have a data import for Acela, which is our system used by Development Services. So their payment information, they record it in Acela and then it is imported on a daily basis into our financial system. We have three systems, EMS Safe, Secure Pay, that is our ambulance billing, the Arizona Judicial Automated Case System, Ajax is used by our courts, and finally, the Fusion System used by our Parks and Recreation. All of those are manual entry. So we have people entering into both systems simultaneously. So keeping those two systems reconciled is, is obviously very labor intensive to do that. What we're looking at doing here is actually having our internal auditor review the import and the process that we're using with Acela to make sure that we have all of the appropriate controls in place. And then we'll be looking to expand that process that we use for data import to the ambulance billing, to the court system, and to the Parks and Recreation systems. And again, the audit committee will have more information on that as we move forward. Utility billing, we have a couple of, a couple of areas. First is the trash can inventory. And, and actually, we're going to be importing that into our Munis system. And then we will use the Munis system as the trash can inventory. So that will become integrated into the system after we complete that import of data. The second is our addressing, which is a data transfer between our GIS, Geospatial Information System, and the Munis system. We have that listed as a manual entry. We do have an import to bring data over. However, it does take quite a bit of time for us to reconcile that information because if we have an address that has a period at the end of road, that doesn't necessarily tie in with what is in our Munis system. So it sees it as two different addresses. So we're, we have to build some business rules in order to make that import more efficient going forward. Finally, we have the, the budget module. We currently import data back and forth between our Questica system, which is our major budgeting software that we use. But we do have manual entry of information from TDX, which is where we have our capital improvement, our CIP plan. Projects are entered into TDX today and also have to be double-entered into the Questica product. So what we're looking at doing there is either taking the data directly from TDX into Munis without touching Questica or in some way incorporating an import from TDX into Questica. As you see here, this is, this is our prioritized list of the opportunities that we have. At the top, you see all shaded and boxed is our HR payroll items that we talked about. All of those will be worked on and optimized between now and the spring as part of our responses to our payroll and timekeeping assessment. After that, we're prioritizing the payments, followed by the UB and budget items. Acela, you see, is actually lower down on the list because we feel we have a good import process going there. But we do want to have that reviewed by our internal auditor before we then take a similar process to the other payment processors. And with that, are there any questions or comments?
Any questions, Vicki?
No.
Trey, I'll start with you. Got anything? No? Brandon?
No, I think I'm good. Thank you.
Good. Wally?
Well, it looks like you've got a lot of systems you're having to work with. And this may be very naive, but I know there's just not one system that works for everything. We've already proven that through the years. How, how do you keep up with the changes that are integrated within these new, or within these software programs that you're using? Do you get notified and then you have to do an update system? Does it slow us down or how does that work?
Absolutely. It does, it is a challenge, having to manage all of these different systems. And there's update cycles for each of those softwares that are different and can cause issues, even within our financial system, Munis. So we do updates to Munis and it breaks the link with ExecuTime, which is a timekeeping system, which is a Tyler product. So you would think that that would be a very integrated system. So, so it is, it is a challenge for us, but we do have a pretty substantial testing regimen that we go through to try to make sure we capture those before we have downstream impacts that are unintended. One of, one of the key things, and it was, as, as a part of the payroll and timekeeping assessment, it identified that we need to do needs assessments to see, are there good business reasons to have these separate systems? And identify those specifically and say, this is the reason why we have a separate timekeeping system for that purpose. Or see if there's a way that we can use another tool or one of the tools, one of the other tools that we have to, to integrate that a little bit better. So needs assessments are a key component as we go forward to make sure that we're not just buying another software and putting it in because it was, looks nice or we, we had a vendor show it to us and it had a feature that we liked, but maybe there are other things that it couldn't do appropriately. So working with our, our partners in, in IT, making sure that we get needs assessments put together for these is very important.
So do you do a yearly look at all of these systems to see if we need to change any or upgrade? Or, I'm sure you do, but how does that work for us? How do we know that you're staying up to date with everything?
I, I can tell you for the, for the financial system, we, we do look at the updates that are coming out. All of the time, we're looking at that. So there, there are updates that you do to the system that are patches, so to speak, that we, every, every couple of months, we're looking at those to make sure that we're, we're keeping up to date with those patches. And then there's upgrades like we're looking at doing this fall, which is, which is a more comprehensive type of update that you see every couple of years usually. So we, we do that with our financial system. We, as part of what our payroll and timekeeping assessment showed us, we need to be doing the same thing for these other softwares as well.
Well, I know it's difficult sometimes to keep all of this secure, but y'all are doing a wonderful job with what you have. So if you find that you need additional software, don't wait till we are in a hole and we have to have it, if you can. I mean, it, it's easy to say, but then I know y'all are monitoring all of this. And we thank you for trying to, to bring us up to date. I remember when I first came on council, Fire was doing their time sheets with pen and pencil. And I thought that was so hysterical because I didn't know you still did that in this day and age. So thank you for trying to bring us up to the 20th century.
Laura?
Well, first off, I want to thank you for keeping the HR and payroll at the highest priority on this list of projects because I think it definitely warrants it. And from this, it shows you a lot of work to do. And does your, does this, your successful integration require IT support and involvement?
Absolutely. That's why Lisa's sitting right next to me.
All right. So how do, how are you going to? We just went through everything you need to do as well as everything that needs to be done in finance. So how does all of that going to come together and work? Because there's only so many people.
So the good thing is that a lot of these systems for what we were looking at in our last presentation, as well as this presentation, they kind of coincide together. And that's why we're kind of partnering today on our presentations to show that we are prioritizing those things that make sense. And so we are using tools that are provided to us by the vendor to integrate these software. And we actually use supplemental funds, I think I mentioned in my last presentation, to buy some of those toolsets that were necessary to do these integrations. So with that, now we have the people, we have the process, and we now have the tools. So we should be able to hit these in a much easier manner than we would have last year.
Okay, great.
I think the other thing I'd like to mention is that with, with the recently, recently hired internal auditor that we have in place and the internal audit program in general, that's really going to help us prioritize based on risks, which is very important for us to be doing. Obviously, there's only so many resources. So how do we target these? So the internal, it's the two of us along with our partner departments. And, and now we have another partner in our internal auditor to help us to, to really identify these risks and prioritize.
I, I agree. I, I think the internal audit, hiring of the internal auditor is very timely. You know, certainly we're thinking about the money, which is really important, but the processes are just as critical. So I'm, I'm really happy to see that that's an important part of the job. So in the council activity report, it, it talked about in 2018, we implemented this new core financial system. But due to operational needs, and it listed all the things you couldn't do. Have those operational needs now been overcome? Are you going to be able to do the things that you need to bring it up to date?
Yes, but that's, one of the, one of the key things for us is the, is the update. Now, I'll, I'll caveat this by saying, every vendor tells you that when the, it's going to be fixed with the next update. However, there, there are some major things that'll allow us to be more efficient with the fixes that we have coming with the new update. So that, that's kind of a key thing for us. We, we certainly have enough resources to get that update in place and, and begin working on these other items as well.
So I imagine you have to look at your own internal processes as well in terms of paper and how you're doing things is all part of that complete process.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you for the update.
Benita?
The only thing I have is thank you for prioritizing the HR payroll issues and information. I appreciate that. Thank you.
And thank you. There's nothing to add. So with that, let's bring up the last one. Review of development continuum streamlined processes. Just go ahead and introduce yourself to the public that's watching.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Katie Wilken, Development Services Director.
And I'll be participating to Rourke Masterson, City Attorney.
And we are here to follow up on one of our strategic plan items to evaluate the process, evaluate processes to streamline the development continuum. Rourke and I presented on this to you last year with improvements, but after we did that and had further discussions, there was an interest in continuing to hear about this item. And so it was added to our city manager's goals. And so this is our opportunity to come back and tell you about the progress we've made over the past year in improving the development continuum timeline. So the first thing we did to find out where we should focus is talk to our customers about where they want us to focus. So this February, we did an electronic survey. We received 129 responses from our Development Services customers, and I'll get into that a little bit in a moment. After we did the electronic survey, we held an in-person customer listening session. So 30 of our customers volunteered to come and spend a half day with us to delve into these items in more detail. One of our customers, Jimmy Lindblom from Willman Construction, volunteered to facilitate it for us. And so it was just this really great session to really hear more about what exactly they meant by some of those survey responses. And then in addition to that, Rourke and I have both been meeting with our customers one-on-one to have more in-depth, you know, on-the-side conversations about where we need to focus our efforts. So the good news, the strengths. Overall, the electronic survey that we did was very positive. And a lot of the positive feedback focused around our team, which we were really excited to see. Eighty-seven percent of respondents found our staff to be helpful, professional, and committed to navigating the process. Some of our other feedback, I, I specifically, we had some open-ended items and just wanted to take the opportunity to share some of the things our customers said, that we have friendly staff with great communication. They're always very helpful and willing to listen and come up with collaborative solutions. That the experience has continued to improve over the last four to six months and that response times have gotten vastly better over the past six months. And again, the survey was done in February. So I certainly hope if we did it again today, they'd say it's continued even more since then. But it, it really shows by highlighting and focusing on this item. We've had the opportunity to really make improvements for our customers. One specific improvement that got highlighted during both the survey and at the listening session was the improvement we told you about last year, which council acted on to make an improvement to our final plat process. So I wanted to report back to you on that. If you remember, a couple of years ago, the state legislature passed a law that allowed us to make final plat approvals administrative. We were only one of a couple cities, I think one of three cities, that took advantage of this opportunity. But I can tell you, just by doing that, that really said something to our customers, the Home Builders Association and many of the home builder members have been singing Goodyear's praises by being one of those first communities to step out and do this administrative. Because so few cities did it though, they just passed a law this last session requiring all cities to make final plots administrative. So I was really happy that we'd already done that hard work. So thank you very much for authorizing us to do it last year. But we made that change, it was in effect November of 2024. So before then, it was taking about 292 days for final plots to get through a process. That's calendar days. Almost immediately after we made the change, we were able to reduce that to 166 days. But of course, we're never done with improving our processes. And so with further improvements we were able to make internally, we've gotten that down to 71 days. So in less than a year's time, we've been able to get it from 292 to 71 days. And I do just want to give a shout out, those additional improvements are all thanks to our plan review managers, Brad Finkie, Christian Williams, and Jeff Rallo, who've been working so hard on our review times and in work management to help their teams. And it's due to their hard work that this reduction has happened. So of course, it wasn't all great news. Our customers did highlight some opportunities for us to work on. And I just want to point out, this photo on the slide here is from our customer listening session. So you can see, we just sat down at roundtables and Jimmy just wrote down everything everyone had to say. And then off to the side there is staff from Development Services and Legal. We're both in attendance so we could just hear what our customers were saying in the room. So they said there are a lot of other processes with our plan review timeframes that they would like us to work on and continuing to improve, which we are doing. They also specifically mentioned comments and stipulations. They would like to see more consistency in the comments and stipulations that we're providing to them. So we're working on that. Rourke's going to tell you a little bit about that in a minute. And then also, they, one of the highlights they had was finding more ways to empower our staff. Again, there's a lot of great trust with our staff and they're happy with the service they receive. But they had, do apparently hear sometimes from our staff members, "Oh, I'm not sure about your question. I'm going to have to go back and find out." And then they're feeling like it's taking time to get those answers back. And, and they're basically telling us, you know, it'd be great if you can find better ways in your processes so that staff can make those decisions on the fly so that they can move on with the decision. One thing I want to point out is we didn't hear a lot in this last round specifically about the legal portion of the process. And I just wanted to make sure everyone was aware why that may be. So in fiscal year 2025, Development Services processed 5,858 permits. In addition to that, we processed 295 planning cases. And with those, it was 6,153 plans and permits. Only about 60 of those items went to legal for review. So they only see about 1% of our cases. Now, the cases they see are large, they're annexations, they're rezonings. They take a lot of work and resource from the legal department to process. But when we go to our customers and ask them where they want us to focus our efforts, they're often looking at the volume and looking at things like the single-family permit process and some of those things and making sure we and some of those things, and making sure we focus our efforts there as well. So we've been hearing a lot of good things about the legal portion of the process. However, again, we're always committed to making improvements. So Rourke's going to go through some of the improvements we've been making.
Thank you. I appreciate the comments leading on. Appreciate the opportunity to get back with council this evening. We met about a year ago and kind of talked about where we were at as far as the strategic plan. At that point, on the legal end, we talked about the Development Agreement's standard operating procedure that had been developed. Since that time, we've already communicated to council that we've removed legal from the plat review process, since one of our goals is streamlining the process and also trying to remove where appropriate the legal touchpoints. You know, having a case move from DSD up to legal, back down, trying to only have legal review when it's absolutely necessary and when it's critical and is determined that the plating could be handled administratively at that point. We also moved the real estate division that had been housed in the legal department to the engineering department, so that the real estate functions, dedications, et cetera, could be handled when the engineering review on a development project. And again, one less touchpoint when a project's moving to legal and trying to streamline the process. So in that spirit of that review, we've continued to work through various efforts to streamline our processes. We've also had a rotation of attorneys handling the development process. So it's an opportunity for a fresh start on how we handle some matters. And it was an opportune time. But we've taken that moment to continue to revise some of our processes. One of the things, we recognized that there was no need for a second legal review at the PNC, post-PNC. Prior to this point, an item came in for a review of legal prior to the PNC hearing, then came back to legal after the PNC hearing for a second legal review. We looked at it, there's very little substantive changes that were ever being made in that legal review. And it just didn't make sense to have that second legal review. So we removed that stepping stone from the review process. One of the other things, and as Katie indicated, we heard from the development community and I'd heard it from some of my meetings, were a review of our stipulations and see if they're appropriate. Were they overly complex? Were they too long? Were they really addressing unique areas of development? Or is it something that could be referred to in our city code or engineering standards? Had we gotten overly legalistic on our stipulations? It seemed like a good opportunity to have a third-party review. So we retained Attorney Frank Cassidy. He's recognized as an expert in land use law in Arizona. And he had him review a number of our zoning ordinances, just to have an independent review. How do we compare to other cities? Are we overly complex? Are we overly dependent on the stipulation process in our zoning ordinances, at least from a legal perspective? And he took a look at it, he compared us to a number of other cities. There's basically three models he identified in the valley on how various cities handle zoning stipulations. There's cities that are minimalistic. He identified them as hybrid models, which rely upon code, rely upon stipulations and accomplishing their goals from a legal perspective in the zoning ordinance. And then there's the model that we've been using, which is reliant on stipulations. He identified Phoenix and Buckeye as other cities that are more in line with how we have conducted business. And he said, generally speaking, we hit the issues. He said, "We do a good job identifying the issues, the infrastructure requirements, the things that the city's trying to accomplish. But perhaps this would be an opportunity to focus on making it a little bit more straightforward, a little bit legalistic, and perhaps looking at some of the other models as a way forward if we want to revise the way we draft stipulations," which makes sense. And it is in line with some of the feedback that I'd heard from the attorneys I spoke to. So we're taking Frank's advice, and we're working with Katie's group. And we have an ongoing initiative to really change our paradigm on how we draft those stipulations. You should start seeing that as we move forward. So that is something that is in process. And it kind of goes hand-in-hand with one of the other initiatives that's currently in process, which is to develop a list of standard stipulations that come up in our zoning cases. Because there's certainly issues that repeatedly come up in our zoning cases that apply across the board. And as opposed to reinventing the wheel every time we come through, the initial will be, and we're going to work with Katie's group, and we're going to have Frank come in and help us with that, is develop a list of standardized stipulations to address these commonly occurring matters. And make sure that we also have these issues addressed in city code and in engineering standards and our development standards, so we don't have to repeat it. We can just point to those areas in our codes for the issues that arise in all zoning cases. So that's another initiative that's going to be moving forward. And then once we have the developed list of standard stipulations, we're going to publish it on our website. So a development partner coming in to start a case already knows what the stipulations are going to be. And that just gives them comfort moving forward. You know in the front end what they're going to be. You're not negotiating those stipulations on every zoning case. A little bit of data we've looked at, as Katie highlighted, and my numbers are right in line with hers. We've reduced the number of legal cases coming in from DSD. We're down about 54% because we've removed the plating process. And as a corollary of that, our legal turnaround times have improved about 20% over the year. So the cases we are getting in are going out the door about 20% faster than they were in the past. So we're certainly seeing the results of the efforts to streamline in this process.
Okay, so to wrap us up. One is, I wanted to make sure everyone knows, we in Development Services host a quarterly development advisory forum. We've been doing it for many years. One of the improvements we've made, based on our customer feedback, though, is we are hosting it in person. We had been doing it via Teams only, and then our customers told us they wanted us to find more opportunities for us to meet in person and say hello and put faces to names. So we're now doing a meet and greet before the meeting, and we have some breakfast items, and then we hold the meeting. People can still attend via Teams, though, so it's whatever's at our customers' convenience. And it's been great, because each time we do it, there's more and more people who come in person. And it is a great way just to say hello to everybody. So at these meetings, we are reporting out on the improvements we make and continually getting more feedback on where we should focus more improvements. So after we held our customer listening session, we had a lengthy, detailed report out at the Development Advisory Forum on everything we heard, just laid it out there and told them what our plans were to address those items. At our last meeting was one of our first report outs on the review timeframe. So again, we're just pulling all the data as we have it and providing it to them. And it was a really great discussion, because they, you know, gave us priorities of other processes they wanted to make sure we started with first, which timeframes were where they wanted them, which ones we needed to work on. So we've really opened this dialogue that can continue forever to make sure we're meeting the customers' needs. These forums, we also record them, and they're on our website. So anyone who wants to see more about that detailed readout of our improvements or where we are, they can go to the Development Services website and watch any of these. And that way, too, if they miss the Development Advisory Forum, they can still catch up. So improvements that Rourke just described with the standard stipulations, we'll be able to present that at the Development Advisory Forum and then have a conversation, make sure everyone knows where to find those online, and that they meet the needs. We are also going to conduct an annual survey. As I said, we held our first one this past February, but we do plan to do that every spring. So we're not going to stop the survey just because we did it once. And then we are also going to continue one-on-ones and roundtables. I tell the customers all the time, I'm always happy to go out to coffee and have a conversation about anything they want to talk about. And then again, we may not do a big customer listening session at the rec campus again, but we have heard from our customers that maybe roundtables. So again, if the stipulations come out and people want to discuss it, maybe we'd have a stipulation roundtable and have small groups of whoever wants to discuss it and provide comment in more detail. And then finally, we do have a big opportunity with the zoning ordinance update. That is going to be coming to you in work session to discuss some various topics. Some of them are process improvements we've heard from customers. And also just modernizing our standards lessens the need for rezoning cases or PEDs. So it also is a process improvement in itself, just to have a more modern zoning ordinance. So that's coming to you in work session, and we're working toward having that ready to be adopted in June of 2026. So that's another one of our big continuous improvement projects going on right now. So with that, that wraps up my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you. Vicki, any questions?
No.
Well, let me start on this side here. Benita?
No questions, but thank you for this update. It feels very proactive, very thorough, and it's very much appreciated. Thank you.
Laura?
For the benefit of Benita and Trey, all this came about because there's a lot of criticism from the development community and some of the attorneys about process and timelines, and time is money and things like that. And Katie, I just want to really commend you and your team. You've been at this pretty hard for a couple of years. And the work that you've done is just really impactful and meaningful. But it's also, not only are you improving the process, but you're building stronger relationships. And so it's much easier for people to contact you directly instead of going through mayor or council or city manager. And so there's a lot of value in those kinds of relationships. Your, you know, this process improvement really is a part of your culture now. And it's really fun to see how you've really embraced it and you've run with it and doing great things. And, you know, I know you got a lot of good feedback, and of course, there's opportunities, but there will always be opportunities. And that's okay, because they're helping you to prioritize them, and they feel like they've got some involvement in it, and it's really commendable. Rourke, just want to thank you for your proactive involvement into this process. I think, you know, just the way that you've been responding to the issues that the stakeholders identified, specifically like the area of stipulations, getting that third-party evaluation of everything, I think, is very objective and helps you, you know, to move forward. And I think the collaboration between the two of you has been really positive. I hope that it continues, and I for one would like to have another annual report. I think this is so critical. And I think we need to celebrate our successes, because we're doing good work. And I think it helps to minimize some of the criticism we get maybe from others who like to point at cities, "You're not responsive, you're not doing things." And I think we can say confidently that we're very proactive and we're very involved. So thank you both.
Wally?
Katie, I'm assuming other cities are doing the same thing we're doing. We're not the only ones that are trying to save these developers money and get their projects through in a timely manner so that they can build or do whatever they want to do.
We're certainly not the only ones. Some cities are more proactive in this work than others and have more challenges than others. So I would say I think we're on the forefront of connecting with our customers.
Okay, well, as long as we're not, as long as we're not upholding what we want to have in this city to the extent that, you know, complainers are wonderful. You can hear them and hear them, and you think if you change something, they'll stop complaining. Well, they'll find something else to complain about. And it's just a never-ending thing. But while I appreciate everything that's been done, because we have been on the end of receiving comments about how slow it is to get things through the city and, you know, this, that, and the other. And I understand how hard it is sometimes to change even the culture of your staff, and I appreciate your staff coming forward. But this is important, but it's not a fix for everything. And we know that this is going to be ongoing forever. It's not going to ever be a done deal, because there's going to be something that some developer doesn't particularly care for or like, and they're going to think that we should be doing it better. So just keep your antennas on and just do what's best for this city. And that's the most important thing. But thank you for all that you're doing. We appreciate it.
Ray?
Yeah, once again, thank you for your hard work on this. I know we've been doing this for many, many years. And I know that some of the developers had questions about the legal and development services. So I really appreciate you guys working together, talking to our customers. Sounds like you're doing a great job by including them, so that's really, really great that we're doing that. And going from 292 to 71 days is huge. I remember when we were trying to something like that before, you guys brought that to us. We were trying to really reduce things, and some council members didn't want to do it. But I'm glad you were able to work around and make that a little faster, so thank you for that. And then, yeah, I think that's good. So continue the good fight, continue to try to improve and keep kaizen, make sure it's a good go and streamline as possible. So thank you for working together, and like I said, and holding those meetings with our stakeholders, so thank you.
Trey?
Nothing major to add, just, you know, it's a continuous effort. Keep doing it.
Yeah, the only thing I'd like to add is unfortunately, not all cities are doing this. And we have the battle down with the state legislature as a result. And I really appreciate all your efforts. I echo Laura's comments that we're to be proactive in this. We may be on the forefront of all of this out there in the state out. But unfortunately, we've got to keep pressing on, because sometimes the squeaky wheel gets the grease. And what happens is down to legislature. If you get one or two bad actors, we get lumped into that. So we do need to celebrate, I really agree with Laura, we need to celebrate our successes on that. We are trying our best to make it as transparent as we can. In fact, we were at a, I think it was the one you were at, Wally, not that long ago, at a groundbreaking, and some of you others, where the actual developer praised our staff for how well that was easy to work with. So again, you guys are getting there, and just keep up the good work. And with that, the next regular meeting will be October 27, 2025. No further business. Hang around here. We're going to stay here for the next one. Give us about five to 10 minutes. Are we ready, gentlemen? Ready? Like to call a community facilities district meeting to order, October 6, 2025. This is a joint meeting of the following community facilities districts. One, Community Facilities General District Number One, Palm Valley Community Facilities District Number Three, Community Facilities District Number One, Wildfire Ranch Community Facilities District, Wildfire Ranch Community Facilities District Number Two, Cotton Flower Community Facilities District, Estrella Mountain Ranch Community Facility District, King Ranch Community Facilities District, Centerra Community Facilities District, Cortina Community Facilities District. Will the district clerk please read the recall?
Let the record reflect that all members are present, and Councilmember Gillis is participating by telephone.
Thank you. Now it's time for members of the public who would like to address the CFD board on any non-agenda items with the jurisdiction of the board. Are there any?
I have none.
Thank you. Will the district court clerk please read the consent agenda items? Number one, by title only.
Item one, approval of minutes.
That's a good one. All right, does anyone on the board wish to remove an item? I guess. No? We good? All right. Let's see. All of those in favor, say aye. Well, we got a motion, yeah. Motion? Got it? Second, all right. Aye, votes? Vicki?
Aye.
Any nays? No nays? Unanimous, all right. Let's see. Our public hearing is for the feasibility report for the Montecito Number Four Special Assessment District within the Estrella Mountain Ranch Community Facilities District. Open the public hearing. You're up.
Thank you, Chair Pazillo, and members of the board. We're here tonight to discuss the potential formation of a special assessment district, Montecito Number Four, which has been requested by the landowner. So a special assessment district constructs or requires infrastructure and issues bonds to pay for that infrastructure, and then levies an assessment on the properties to pay for those bonds. So a special assessment district's a little bit different than a community facility district in the way that we're using them. So a community facilities district usually builds infrastructures that benefit a larger area, such as the arterial roads in an area, and is paid for with secondary property taxes. The special assessment districts are normally more focused, smaller areas, and they pay for the collector roads in our practice. And an assessment is placed on the individual properties. And this map here of Estrella Mountain Ranch will kind of give you that idea. So the darker outline that you see all the way around is Estrella Mountain Ranch has a secondary property tax that pays for arterial-type infrastructure, like the infrastructure of Estrella Parkway, for instance. The individual districts that you see, the special assessment districts, there's, this would potentially be the ninth district within Estrella Mountain Ranch. So you see each of those individual districts pays for the infrastructure within those districts. The one we're talking about tonight is Montecito Four located here in the southern area. We last created a special assessment district in 2023 for Lucero Number Two located in the northern area, and Montecito Three two years earlier, which is this smaller section right here. So speaking about the application in the feasibility report that we have here, so this location has 172 acres in total, 508 single-family lots. The infrastructure that is going to be reimbursed includes a section of Calistoga Drive that was completed back in January of 2019, this section here. A portion of that was already paid for by Montecito Number Three, a total of just under, just over a quarter mile, 1,401 linear feet of Calistoga Drive, and then an additional 2,700 feet of Calistoga Drive. That is under construction as we speak. And finally, completing the loop, West Mount Vista Drive Phase Two, 4,000 linear feet, completing the loop around the Montecito Number Four district. So the financing plan, the uses of the funds, about $9.8 million in the acquisition of that infrastructure. We would establish a reserve and pay for some interest, about $1.2 million. And then there's cost of issuance and underwriting, about $305,000, a total of $11.3 million. The sources for those funds would be about $10.6, $10.7 million of bonds that would be issued, and then the landowner would contribute $600,000, mostly to pay for the underwriting costs and the cost of issuance, total again of $11.3 million. These are estimates at this time. As we are not issuing debt tonight, we are discussing the formation of the district. The issuance of debt would happen after the completion and acceptance of the infrastructure at a later date. The assessments, as you see here, broken out into the various parcel areas. The assessment per lot will be $21,000. Total proceeds would be $10.7 million, as discussed on the previous slide. So tonight, we're to have the public hearing that we're doing on the feasibility report. We'll then take three separate council or board actions. The first will incorporate both action on this feasibility report and a resolution of intention to form the district. Then we'll take action to order the work, which is the construction of the infrastructure that's already underway. And finally, take action on approving the levy and assessment diagram. So with that, we can open it up for the public hearing.
Just back up just one for there for you. One more. Lot assessment, that $21,000, is that, how many homes go on that lot?
That $21,000 is per, is per lot, which will be a single, single-family residence.
Okay, so that's $21,000 for the life of the bond, or is that $21,000 yearly?
So that is $21,000 for the life of the bond. So the amount that will be assessed yearly will be determined when we issue the bond.
Okay, yeah, that kind of threw me there when I saw the $21,000. So I just want to make sure that, you know, that that's covering over a period of time. Thank you. All right, where are we at? Do we have any speaker cards?
No, mayor.
All right, anybody in the audience like to speak? All right, I guess, close the public hearing. Let's see, we don't have any other actions taken besides conducting the public hearing which should be done. Does the board have any questions to discuss? Seeing none, we'll go ahead and move forward. Three items for business. Would like to remind the board to wait for a motion and a second before discussion. Our first item is to approve Montecito Number Four Assessment District feasibility report. You've already given your presentation. Anybody in the audience like to add anything? Seeing none, will the district court please read the resolution, EMR CFD Resolution 2025-168, by title only?
I've got a mouthful here.
Yeah, I know.
Adopt Resolution EMR CFD Res 2025-168, approving the feasibility report relating to the acquisition and financing of certain improvements benefiting the district, declaring its intention to acquire certain improvements described in the feasibility report, forming Montecito Assessment District Number Four, determining that special assessment revenue bonds will be issued to finance the costs and expenses thereof, and declaring the improvements to be of more than local or ordinary public benefit, and that the costs of said improvements will be assessed upon the assessment district, providing that the proposed improvements will be performed and district special assessment revenue bonds issued under the provisions of Title 48, Chapter Four, Article Six, Arizona Revised Statutes, and all amendments thereto and ratifying all prior acts, including the execution and delivery of a waiver and development agreement.
Can I get a motion in a second? Did you get them? Did you get the motion second? All right. Open for board discussion. Let's see, Councilwoman Gillis, do you have, or Board Member Gillis, do you have any comments?
Nope.
Okay. Anybody else? Be no further discussion, let's go ahead and vote. Councilwoman, Council Board Member Gillis?
Aye.
Has everybody else voted? Any oppose? Passes unanimously. All right, next item is to order the public infrastructure for Montecito Number Four Assessment District. You've already done your presentation. Anybody in the audience like to speak? Seeing none, will the district court please read Resolution EMR, CFD Resolution 2025-169, by title only?
Adopt EMR CFD Res 2025-169, ordering the public infrastructure project performed as described in EMR CFD Res 2025-168.
Can I get a motion in a second to adopt EMR CFD Resolution 2025-169?
So move.
You got it? All right, good. Let's see, open border discussion. Board Member Gillis? Any comments?
No.
All right, there'd be, let's see, anybody else? There be no further discussion, let's go ahead and vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Got a vote? Okay. All right, motion carriers unanimously. On the final item is Montecito Number Four Assessment District approving the living of the assessment. Everything's been already done there. Anybody in the audience like to speak? No? District clerk, please read Resolution EMR CFD Resolution 2025-170, by title only?
Adopt Resolution EMR CFD Res 2025-170, approving the living of an assessment in form of assessment diagram for the Estrella Mountain Ranch Community Facilities District, City of Goodyear, Arizona.
Thank you. Can I get a motion in a second to adopt EMR CFD Resolution 2025-170? Got it? All right. Open for board discussion. Board Member Gillis, anything?
No.
Anything for anybody else here? No, no further discussion, let's go ahead and vote. Ayes? Aye, aye?
Aye.
There we go. Unanimous carries. Now, we don't have it on here, but I think you mentioned you wanted to add something. What was done for the week before I close out, is that okay or not?
Fortunately, it's not on the agenda this evening. We're in the CFD meeting. Yeah.
All right, sorry there. Okay. No further business? It's adjourned. Yep. All right.